So I'm bringing the Temecula Planning Commission regular meeting to order for August 7th at 6:00 PM. And we will begin with our flag salute from Commissioner Gary Watts.
For those of you in the audience, please feel free to join us tonight for the salute to the flag.
And he's gonna sing it.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chair Higgo.
Here.
All present.
So I guess I don't have to worry about reading anything. We didn't have any email comments, did we?
We have not received any.
Yeah, okay. Good. We'll go on to the consent calendar, and I'll be looking for a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to adopt consent calendar.
Second.
You have a second?
Yes.
You second it? Okay, so Commissioner Watts is first, Mr. Solis second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five to zero, and we will go on to... I guess this is a public hearing, isn't it? Okay. The number two is long-range planning project number LR 24-0005, amending titles five. Do I need to read the public hearing?
I don't think it's necessary since no one is present.
Thank you. Five, amending titles five, eight, fifteen, and seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code. And Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As mentioned, this is LR 24-0005. This is our annual code maintenance. You have seen this before, probably about a year or so ago. Kind of a running list of planning staff keeps deficiencies, errors, typos, things like that in the code. And this is an annual thing we do to hopefully clarify things, clean it up, and just make it a better usable document for everyone. But a background, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by the City Council in 1990. Since its adoption, the code has been, or I'm sorry, the City Council has periodically made amendments to the code to improve its clarity, improve processes, and implement state law. And then the Planning Commission is required, per Government Code Section 65-800, to review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding zoning regulations and amendments to Title 17 zoning of the Temecula Municipal Code. This proposed ordinance, as mentioned, would amend titles five, business licenses and regulations, Title eight, health and safety, Title 15, building and construction, and finally Title 17 zoning. The changes to Title five, eight, and fifteen, although not under the purview of the Planning Commission, are included to provide the clarity regarding the totality of the proposed ordinance. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm seeing them on... I'm seeing the slides. It's not being presented.
Nope.
Blank screen now. How am our light ordinance? We're doing it. Did you want me to go ahead and back up to the beginning, or is everyone okay with that? Okay. Didn't think so. Okay, so we'll go ahead and jump right into the changes. There's thirteen in total. We have three changes to Title five, starting with Section 5.22.120, which is exemptions for massage establishments. And we're going to clarify that mental health professionals and those holding a license to practice the healing arts are not authorized to supervise massage professionals and are not exempt from the requirements of Chapter 5.22. Our change number two of three for Title five will amend Section 5.24.080, other requirements and prohibitions. This is specific to tobacco shops, and this would add a reference that clarifies all aerosol paint containers, marking pens, and nitrous oxide containers shall be kept behind lock and key per Section 9.08.040. This is an existing standard in the code. We're just adding a reference specific to tobacco shops for that. Keeping with tobacco shops, Section 5.24.120, we're going to clarify that underage sale is prohibited. It is in there already, but just through Government Code reference, we're going to spell out 21 in there. And then we are going to further clarify that the storage, delivery, pickup, in-person, or online sales of flavored tobacco products is prohibited. Our ordinance as adopted states that such sales are prohibited, but we don't clarify online storage, things like that. So we're just gonna kill it right there. Jumping into Title eight, our first change will amend Section 8.12.120. We're going to include disorderly house as a public nuisance and subject to abatement per the Municipal Code. This would be applicable throughout the city for any establishment that has, could be affecting its neighbors through rowdy behavior, parties, drunkenness, things like that. So really just another tool for code, RSO, or anyone may needing to be policing an establishment. And then our operating standards for stationary vendors, Section 8.60.090. And we're going to clarify that patrons of such establishments may not block bike lanes, entrances, or signage of existing businesses, and dimensions for such operations, which would be a 10 by 10 pop-up. Jumping to Title 15, we're going to amend Chapter 15.24, which is our streamlined review. We're going to implement the requirements of AB 970, which sets strict approval timelines for electric and hydrogen vehicle fueling stations. Really just requires the city to deem an application complete within five to 10 days, depending on the scale of its proposal. And then they're approved within 20 to 40 days, again, depending on the scale. So just keeping compliant with state law there. Jumping into the meat of it here, we got Title 17. Section 17.01.070, relationship to existing specific plan and Riverside County land use to ordinance. Pretty much this, specific plans that were adopted prior to the city's incorporation or slightly thereafter use the county's zoning document or ordinance 348. So when those specific plans were adopted, that ordinance was locked in place at that time, and some of these adopted back in, you know, the mid to late 80s. Since then, there's been a lot of changes with land uses, development standards, all kinds of things like that. But that document essentially locked in time at that place. What we're going to do here is that we're going to clarify that the city's general plan, land use, and zoning designations will be used in place of Riverside County ordinance 348 for specific plans utilizing said ordinance. And that would be specific plans number one, two, three, four, six, nine, 10, and 12 within the city. Keep in title 17, Chapter 17.04.020, temporary use permits. We're going to specify that vendors and/or farmers' markets are considered major temporary uses if parking spaces are occupied, parking stalls, anything like that. And this is based on the use of the facilities. We've had a lot of traffic issues. We would have them permitted for so many stalls, they would expand to that, impacting parking beyond what was originally approved. And it really is just a way to keep them in check. If they do go into the parking lot utilizing things like that, then it's just a higher level of review by staff to make sure we can accommodate all those potential impacts. Change three, we're going to amend Table 17.08.030, which is a schedule of permitted uses. And we're just going to correct Note nine related to annual keeping. Presently, it reflects a chapter when it needs to reflect the whole title. And then we're going to add Note 16 referring to Chapter 5.22 for massage establishments. And then our last change, Title 17, is we're going to amend Chapter 17.40 telecommunications facilities, and we're going to remove water tanks as an approved location for wireless telecommunications facilities. Such facilities, like you see on the screen there, once a wireless telecommunications facility is established, they're allowed by FCC rules to essentially expand without city input. So if, when one goes up, it can essentially go around the entire water tank, water tower. So we're going to go ahead and remove those as an approved use. Still be able to have plenty on stealth poles designed as trees, things like that. And that wraps up our changes. A little bit of the ordinance history. This was seen by the PC Municipal Code Maintenance Update Subcommittee, Municipal Code... Municipal Code Maintenance Update Subcommittee on the 17th of July, and then the City Council General Plan Update Subcommittee on the 23rd. And then it's before you today, and we'll be taking it to the City Council the 1st of September. SEQA determination, staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3. And staff's recommendation is to adopt the PC resolution recommending the City Council adopt the ordinance. This completes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mark. We'll start off with Commissioner Ruiz.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Mark. Obviously, I was on that Subcommittee, so we went through this in a little bit more detail. Just want to go back to the temporary use permits. I know we had some conversation in the Subcommittee about one versus multiple. I don't remember the parking spot, so was that kind of the medium in? If someone takes even just one parking spot in front, it would still require, it could be considered a major?
It would classify it as major, yes, just because we have a lot of times when these come in and we process them, we have a hard time getting them to actually give a site plan, let alone a parking analysis. And this would allow, if they do occupy the parking, for us to require it or for staff to do it for them.
Got it. Okay, so that kind of satisfies that level of, or number of vendors or spaces?
They can have as many vendors as they can fit, as long as they don't take up the parking spaces. That'd be the triggering point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had, yep.
Okay, Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Okay. So question on, actually, five and six, on the analysis, which is nuisances, public nuisance, and also the fueling stations. So, and I recognize that this, you know, I don't know that we have a say in this, but... Is there any way of making that more specific on the public nuisance and the wording? And what, I don't know, is there a need for that? Or what was, I guess, what was the feeling from City Council Subcommittee on that?
This was, this kind of came up from some lessons learned in Old Town over the years, and some of the issues we had where our definitions were lacking for enforcement purposes. Whereas perhaps someone... Crime committed around the property was not specifically spelled out in our definition. This would create a, if crimes committed within 50 feet of the property would be included as a potential nuisance for that.
So, okay, so you feel like, or feel like this is more specific than what you had?
Yes, this is in addition to what is there, these AA and BB. There's Z, Y, X, all the way back.
Don't feel like there's need for being more specific?
We just wanted to close this in.
Comments?
Maybe the state has a definition?
If you have suggestions, you know, we, even though it's not within part of what, you know, is in the purview, I don't think staff would object to hearing inputs on this section if you think it needs additional clarity.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't, I read that, and I don't think it's very specific, to be honest.
Are you looking at the staff report description? Because that's a little more general. If you go to the ordinance, it's more specific. Yeah.
So it's Section eight of the ordinance spells out what would additionally be considered a nuisance. So there's a long list, and this is adding to that list. So this isn't the entirety. This is what's being added to that code section. So there are other provisions that include definitions under state law, to your point.
I was gonna say, under state law, I know.
100%. So there are provisions already in our code that mirror the language in state law. This is just adding to, as a result of activities that staff has seen that we thought, oh, let's just be even more specific.
Okay, that makes more sense there. Okay, and then on number six. So it feels like the state is pushing this through, honestly. So what kind of impact on planning does this have with this timeframe? I'm just curious, just a question.
Planning review is very limited for the streamlined process. If they come in just for this, it would be a building permit only. Planning would review it for development standards, setbacks, height requirements, things like that. But as far as the planning review and timeline for us, it is very minimal.
Okay, because it's saying that the bill requires that the applications be deemed complete within five to 10 business days. Like, that's fast.
That is fast. It's in line with solar and other streamlined projects.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it feels like it's kind of being shoved down the throat, doesn't it, a little bit? Anyway. Okay. What other question I have? And then kind of a general question, and this may be for Maricela. So as Planning Commission, I know we deal a lot with land use, like, that's kind of our main thing. But then I also know that we deal a lot with public and safety, health and public safety. And so it's always confusing to me why there's certain things that we have no purview on and certain things that we do have purview on. So that was my main question for this evening, really. That we, you know, that we're not needed for five, six, seven, and eight, or whatever, whatever the numbers are. Sorry, that's not right. Is it? Five, eight, and fifteen. Five, eight, and fifteen. But we are for 17. So that, yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, so the Planning Commission's purview is Title 17, and the Planning Commission's authority is delegated by the state to the city. They create a Planning Commission. There's a requirement for a general plan. And then there's a requirement for consistency between the general plan and our zoning map. So that's really a simplified description of what the Planning Commission's purview is, and that's why Title 17 is your purview. That's the development code. You often see, and we bring things in other titles, because there's overlap between other parts of the ordinance and what we do as planners and issuing business license and permit texts. Massage licenses are part of our application process. So we're responsible for a lot of different things, and we bring those as a courtesy. But it's also beneficial to us because it just clarifies when we have to issue a business license or sign off on a permit. So hopefully that's a basic... Hopefully that answers your question as to why you're seeing other chapter numbers come through.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just like not clear to me why it's not five, eight, and fifteen.
Because it's not a zoning ordinance. So under the government code, exactly what Matt was saying, under the government code, the Planning Commission is required to review zoning ordinances and make a recommendation. So anything related to land use itself, so dealing with, you know, changes of zone, setbacks, those kind of issues must pursuant to state law come to the Planning Commission first for recommendation to the City Council. And so there's like a list in the government code of, these are the things the Planning Commission must review. The Title five, Title eight, those are not zoning-related ordinances. Those are just regular public health, safety-type ordinances. Those would not typically come to the Planning Commission. I think it's just been, as Matt mentioned, staff's practice, if it's part of a larger package, let you see the whole thing. It could be that, you know, some cities just send just the title, you know, zoning, to Planning Commission and keep everything else out. I think staff wants to have a more holistic approach, and that's why you see the entire ordinance.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. It's just a little confusing to me because we, you know, we did an alcohol ordinance, right?
The alcohol ordinance had provisions within zoning as well. So there were some provisions that dealt with kind of the public peace, safety morals section of the code, and there were others that dealt with the zoning and what kind of permits would be required that were linked to Title 17.
So unless it has something to do with land use, it's not going to be in our purview. Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's a simplified way of it, but yes.
But I mean, I do appreciate having the information on the other ones. It's just a question, like, why? I've always asked why since I was born. So just, anyway, all right. I think that's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Watts?
Yes. Well, I learned something tonight. I don't need to go to Lowe's or Home Depot for my spray paint. I can just go to my local cigarette shop. I don't know why they sell it there, but I guess they do. So I'm supporting the efforts we're making there. Second thing, you don't need to worry too much about this, but to the best of your knowledge, have we turned down any hydrogen or fueling stations as a city?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
And most of the time, those would come, like, for instance, like, with the proposed hotel has those electrical charging stations, that would be part of the overall review. Is that correct? It wouldn't be separated out, and they would just do that in 10 days? It would be the whole package. Is that right?
This would be specifically for fueling stations, not so much just the single chargers that businesses have. This would be a hydrogen fueling station where vehicles would show up and fill their vehicles up with hydrogen gas or liquid hydrogen, whatever it is. And same thing for electric vehicles. It'd be for a commercial purpose versus just a courtesy of the business to have it.
Okay. And then the third thing I noticed, on the water tanks. We don't have any that were, that look like the ones in your presentation, but we do have several water tanks in town, thinking of the big green ones, like by the post office and out in Chardonnay Hills. Specifically, do those have any telecommunications equipment on them or others like that in the city?
Within the city, we don't have any, and we're hoping to keep it that way. We've seen other jurisdictions, these pop up, and then they just expand through co-location, and they turn out not quite as pretty as we'd like.
And we still have the ability to keep that from happening, even though it seems like every federal application on cell stuff generally gets approved right away.
Yes, we still have many options for them. Our primary, where we'd like to push them, is monopines or monopole, something to that effect. It's stealth and camouflaged, and then they can co-locate to that as they need.
Okay. I always thought eucalyptus would be a great one to put up, but nobody's done that yet, as far as I know. So anyhow, thank you for the answers on that. I was just, I support all of this stuff. And thanks for explaining that, Mark. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Solis?
Yes, thank you. I had a question about if the city has any, like, a code, or does it allow outdoor vending, I mean, on Section seven? I know there's restrictions, but can you tell me a little bit about what the process is if someone does want to do an outdoor vending?
Yeah, per Assembly Bill, I'm gonna mess this up, 972? 946, my mistake. We, the city and all cities are required to allow for outdoor vendors, mobile and stationary. We are allowed to have requirements for those as far as design, location, things like that, pretty limited. The process for it would be, they would come in, fill out a vending permit application. It would go through Planning for Review, the Sheriff's Department for Review. We'd have a review. Any corrections would be made prior to issuance of a permit, and then it would be a one-year permit issued along with a business license.
Oh, okay. Just haven't seen any, so.
We don't have any, I believe.
Okay. Well, that looks great, then. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I just have one question. The analysis, number two, tobacco shops. The purpose of tobacco shops selling paint and nitrous oxide, marking pens, is for graffiti purposes. They're supplying that big industry. But my question relates to legal age to be able to purchase various different things. If I'm correct, I think you cannot purchase spray cans of paint under 18. Is that correct?
I believe that is the age limit, yes.
Okay. What about marking pens?
I believe if they are paint pens, it is the same. If it is a Sharpie or something more common like that, it is not required.
And I would assume that they're typically selling paint pens, then?
Yes, sir.
What about nitrous oxide?
That, staff is still doing some research on that. There isn't an age limit for that, but as far as prohibit, or preemptions from having additional restrictions on that could be potentially complicated.
Okay. Is there a possibility of not allowing minors in a tobacco shop without an adult? Is that something we could restrict?
I think I would need to look into that. I know that with respect to where smoking... So there's some tobacco retailers where there is, like, a smoke shop affiliated. There, there are limitations on 21 years of age or older. What I don't know is if it's your typical tobacco shop, whether or not there could be age restrictions. Arguably, it seems like because you have to be over the age of 21 to purchase, why would you be going in anyway? But I, we would need to look into that, just to confirm.
Because if we could restrict it, then an owner or someone working there could ask the person to leave immediately. If not, I think then, you know, if they're in there looking around, there's a potential of stealing. And certainly having paint cans and cabinets will help a whole lot with that type of situation. But anything that we could do to prevent and give code enforcement all the tools they could possibly use is, I think, you know, something that's desirable. So, and that could be for, you know, future considerations, so.
Sure. Because this is part of Section five, we can include it as just generally a comment, and we can look at it before going to the council meeting. Well, it's, this could actually arguably, we could just make the change and present it to the council after we've looked into it.
Right.
If it was a Title 17 change, we'd have to bring it back to you again with the revision. But I think because it's in Title five, we would be able to just incorporate it. So if that's part of the motion, we could certainly have staff look into that and see what we could do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mark or anyone else?
No, but just on that, and maybe inner questions, I don't jump into smoke shops at all, but, I mean, what else is sold in there? I mean, is there snacks and soft drinks and that kind of, I mean, for kids to be going in, potentially, underage?
Mark's been to all of them.
I've visited every one in the city, even the illegal ones. Most of them are selling the, they were selling the vape juices when this exercise started. It was walls of vape juice, not a lot of cigarettes, a lot of cannabis paraphernalia, things like that, a lot of glass, things like that, and other things that cannabis establishments aren't allowed to sell, lighters, things like that. So it's a lot of almost everything that the cannabis can't sell, they sell. There are some that have beverage displays, things like that, minor snacks, but no anything really... They would be attractive to someone under 21 unless they're after the tobacco and everything else. I would not be bringing my children here for art supplies, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, what we suspect, based on our research, is that the art supplies are related to graffiti, but also huffing.
Yeah.
Is...
Nothing good.
Is the reason for that. Yeah, nothing good, really.
Nothing healthy for them, so.
Well, and I understand all that, and I agree with all of that. I guess I'm just looking at it from a business perspective, if I've got a shop and I got kids coming in for other things because it's, maybe that, and again, I don't even know where they're located, to be honest. So, you know, it's closer than the next supermarket or gas station or whatever, and they're going down to pick up regular snacks. I'd hate to see the business owner lose that potential by making it 21 or 22.
I think it's a great question, because, I mean, I haven't been in one, so I don't know. But, you know, we've got, we've got code enforcement officers that go in, so.
But if we're making that recommendation to council, I don't know that I would make that recommendation or support that recommendation without knowing some of those answers, you know?
When we passed the smoke shop ordinance, we did specify separation requirements from schools. So these were essentially designed to be separate from schools, so they aren't so close to be a convenient place for them. So there is a separation distance from smoke shops and education institutions, churches, parks, the whole nine. So they were kind of intended to be not an option so much for the students.
That's a good point, too, yeah.
But what about residences, apartment complex, that type of stuff?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good to add that into the motion, if that's something that, you know, City Council would agree with, I think, after you do your research. I think that's a good point. I don't see any reason why they need to be in those kind of stores, period, you know, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments or anything? Thank you, Mark. We'll entertain a motion now?
I'll make a motion to... I should have thought about it first. I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to adopt PC Resolution Number Two Zero Two Four with the amendment to Title, what was it, VIII?
The amendment would be to Section VI of the ordinance, Section Five Point Two Four One Two Zero regarding tobacco shops pertaining to seeing if we can restrict the entry into tobacco shops to someone over the age, twenty-one years of age or older.
Twenty-one years of age or younger?
I'm sorry, younger. I apologize. Yes.
So, Five Point Two Four Zero Eight O. So, is.
Five Point Two Four Point One Two Zero.
Oh, okay.
So, enter, if we look on page four of the ordinance, Section VI, references changes to Section Five Point Two Four One Two Zero, there's an, changes made to section, subsection M and then Q talks about underage sales prohibited. And what I'm hearing is a potential addition to that section to restrict the entry to persons under the age of twenty-one. So, determining whether or not that is a viable option.
Right. That, that motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I just have, I have a question, but I'll wait for.
Okay.
A second.
Go ahead.
A second.
Okay. So, if, if, based on that motion and if it says, yes, we can put that, that language in, is that retro then in municipal code for, for the existing stores or this would just be for all future stores?
I think it would be a require, a new requirement going forward, but I think that would be something we could potentially impose on all stores. Yes. So, for example, these new requirements, I think we'd be able to impose on, because it's an operational standard. It's not like a, you're no longer allowed to operate. It's just here are your new operational standards. And usually there's some period given to, to businesses to comply. There's a lot of messaging that happens from staff. They're advised of here are the new requirements and here's kind of some lead time to bring it into compliance.
And this would just be a code violation, not a law enforcement, police, right? I mean, if, 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 if this were to go into play and there's underage people coming in, are, are someone calling the police and police?
I think that would, that would be a code violation because unless it's a violation of state law or a penal code, then the police department doesn't typically, if there's underage sales happening, that would be a police department matter. But if it's a, our code says no one under the age of twenty-one can enter, then that would be a code enforcement issue.
Okay. And then that would then be susceptible to any other code violation and enforcement fines, whatever that looks like.
Correct.
Okay. Just one clarification.
Good. Okay. So, we have a second?
Yeah.
We already had a motion and a second, yes.
Okay, so we have a first by Turley Trejo and a second by Solis. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. So, I just want, want to be correct. It's five oh.
Could I, could I have a clarification, Maricela, on, on the suggestion that they be twenty-one or over to go in?
Under, yes, twenty-one and over to go in. So, anyone under the age of twenty-one would be prohibited is what I heard.
Everything up to that point. So, that would go as a recommendation to the council and they have the power to adopt that or not. My question is, would that apply to every tobacco shop in the city?
Yes.
Not just, okay. And then if they go to Marietta, they might, it would still be something they could do there, correct?
Correct. So, it'd be, it would be our tobacco retailers that have, you know, that require to obtain permits through the city. There's a certain number that operate. They would be the ones subject to those restrictions.
And building on Adam's point, if, if indeed establishment was found to consistently violate that, would that be a public nuisance as defined under our?
Potentially, I think it would, I would have, I would have to look into that issue, but it could potentially be repeated violations of the municipal code could rise the level of public nuisance under some circumstances.
So, it'd be more of a civil threat or a?
Or it could be a violation of their permit to operate in the city and there could be ramifications for, you know, revocation of a permit because you violated the code.
So, rather than a, a law enforcement action, it would be something more along administrative lines?
Administrative or, yes, correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. Okay, we will conclude this portion. And if I can find my notes here. We will go on to commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioner reports? No? Nothing? Gary?
No.
Okay. Subcommittee reports, you want to just?
Yeah, I mean, we, I was at the subcommittee for all of the stuff that we just approved with the previous hea- hearing. So, it was, it was good discussion. I, I, I will comment because I mentioned it from last time as well. I think it's very proactive of the city that they go through. I mean, there were some significant changes here that, that we looked at, but just knowing that everything's clean to prevent future problems is very proactive and it's just, it's nice to see that, that they're doing that. And I did make the comment that I felt like there was a lot less this year. Either we're just getting it perfectly cleaned up or there's less issues, but whatever it is, I'll take it, so.
Yeah, I think most of this was really to help code enforcement, give them the teeth they need to, to get their job done, so. Okay, next we'll talk, we'll go community development director's report.
Yeah, two updates tonight. The first, I put a card at your chair, the APA conference this year, the state conference is in Riverside and it is September twenty-eighth through October first. If you go to the website, there's a whole program. Every day there are sessions. If any of them interest you, the city is willing to pay for your registration so you can attend the APA conference. So, take a look at the website, let us know if you're interested, we'll get you signed up. You can contact myself or Denise and we'll be happy to do that. The other update is regarding shopping carts and Brandon Rabidou supervises code enforcement and Mark worked on the ordinance as well with regard to shopping carts. So, we just have a brief update to give you the latest on status.
Yeah, just wanted to go over, we originally contacted fifty-six stores. Mark did a lot of that great work over there and approximately eight stores have closed, just normal turnover in businesses. Twenty-three stores have reduced their shopping carts to less than ten, which means they're exempt from the ordinance, or not exempt from that section of the ordinance. We've had thirteen stores that have complied. We have twelve stores that have not complied, but we have seven that basically are in the process of complying. And if someone doesn't comply, we'll, we work with them, issue a notice of violation, fines, and then if they really don't work with us, they get to meet Maricela with a nice letter from our city attorney's office. So, we're working through that process, but we're getting more shopping carts in compliance. If you do see them, please download the city app and report them. We'll take care of them and get our public works team or the private property owner to resolve the issue.
I think I've only seen one probably in the last six months, which is, I mean, that's quite different than a year or so ago. Is that it, Matt? Okay, Matt and I talked earlier about land trusts and I've had an interest in land trusts. The city, at a city council meeting, I think you were, you were there, we spoke about, Stu Stokewell about land trusts and I know a number of commissioners have come to me and asked me about it because they were getting questions. And I think it's something of interest and something that's not a lot of knowledge out there about what they are and how they work. So, Matt, I think you want to tell us what is planned.
Yeah, what we can do is bring this back to the commission. We can have Heidi Urias, our housing analyst, give a presentation. We can do that by receive and file and have a discussion, provide a little background and education on community land trusts and begin that dialogue with the planning commission. So, we'll put that on a future planning commission agenda.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Public Works. Nothing much going on?
No, not a lot going on. Good evening, commissioners. So, we have a couple of projects that, more than a couple of projects that are underway right now. Pachanga Parkway is going through a rehab right now. So, we are doing that work. It'll be done in a couple of weeks, not to be confused with the work that Rancho California Water District is doing because they're doing a recycled water line that's going to Pachanga. So, therefore, we're kind of coordinating with them and we're going to try to get that paving all done at once. And then we have Butterfield Stage Road that is going under rehab right now as well and that's from the Temecula Creek Bridge, south to the city limits. So, going right past Vale Middle School and then all the way to the city limits. And that one's in really bad shape. So, we have those two. The Ox Lane Project on the freeway, you guys have seen some progress with that. They're going to wrap up probably end of September, beginning of October. So, we've started the process of getting a ribbon cutting ceremony together. So, that project went really good. If you recall, we did the groundbreaking in February. So, here we are, you know, September, October, we're going to finish that project. So, good job all the way around by them. And then French Valley, you've seen that. So, you know, no issues there, that's on schedule and we're doing good there. So, those are like the big ones right now, you know, amongst all the, oh, you know what? I should mention the Stampede. That parking lot is undergoing a complete change, restoration due to the work that was done on the creek, if you recall. And so, they needed right away, right away was, or I should say, they needed property when they did the creek, our Riverside County flood. We did an exchange, but a redesign had to be done. So, it's going to be reconfigured with brand-new lights, security cameras, everything. So, that's ongoing right now, but that project will probably go right before the holidays. So.
Is that something they're doing or we, the city, doing?
That's a city project.
It is a city project.
It is a city project.
Just a quick question on the Pachanga. So, I know part of it is for the recycle with RCW. And then what is our part of it, just the repaving?
Yeah, rehab on portions of Pachanga Parkway from where their project ends about a mile, coming back this way to the north.
Okay, I'm telling.
And it's only, it's only in the southbound direction.
Oh.
It's not the full width.
You mean eastbound?
Hmm, eastbound? I'm thinking south.
Towards Pachanga.
Towards Pachanga, towards Paula, towards.
Yeah, that's east, eastbound. Well, anyway, yeah, I'm telling everybody I know not to take that road.
Okay.
It's awful. It's really bad. And Butterfield Stage, so that's supposed to be done before school starts?
Yeah, we're getting the section done near the school before school starts. So, they're going to be paving it Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. Awesome.
All right.
Okay.
Good.
Hey, Ron, I heard Winchester Onramp's going to be closing with, as part of French Valley. Is that, is that?
How do those rumors get out?
I was saying, is, is that true and is it just nighttime closure or what's that, what's that look like?
It's going to be a full closure. We don't really want to talk about it too much right now because we're so far in advance of it. We don't want the public kind of jumping the gun. It'll have a full closure, first of the northbound Onramp and then another closure later of the, the loop, northbound loop Onramp. So, it's all in the northbound direction.
It's all northbound.
But it's not happening until after the first of the year.
Oh, okay. No time, no time soon then?
No time soon. It's going to be after the first of the year, but we'll give the public plenty of advance notice. It's just sometimes people freak out when they hear about those things and it's, it's too far in advance right now and we'll give you guys a good.
I didn't get an email, no. I just.
We're not sending out notifications. I don't know how to, Adam, I don't know how Commissioner Ruiz found out about it.
No, I just, something I'd heard and then it was like, okay, full closure is at daytime, nighttime, just because, just like we saw with the, you know, unfortunate accident on the freeway yesterday, once anything changes on the freeway, the service streets feel the impact pretty bad.
This will be, this will be a full twenty-four hour closure for three weeks on one and another month on the other. So, it's coming. We'll give, we'll give you guys notice, but we didn't, we don't really want that out for public consumption, you know, right now because, you know, it's too early for the public to know.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any update on Nicholas Two?
Oh, that's going well. They're relocating the utility lines right now, the sewer line as well as the water line. The sewer is a fifty, no, the water is a fifty-four inch, so that's taking some time. But work is going well. It's progressing. Probably Nicholas will be open, we're hoping by February, March. So, that's.
On time, okay.
That's going well.
All right, thank you.
The building construction on Inez on, behind the Duck Pond?
Yes.
I gather that some of those are being occupied now?
Yes, we signed off on occupancy.
We did.
On a few.
What's the plan then for redoing Inez there?
So, those plans are right now at ninety percent. We're waiting on the environmental permits to be issued. That is a joint project between the developer and the city.
Right.
And we have a memorandum of understanding with them. And so, once those environment, environmental permits are done and then we need to obtain a, either right of entry or temporary construction easement because the parcel to the south of the Rancho Highlands Project is owned by someone else. And we need, we need their permission to construct the road, even though we don't need any right of way.
Right.
You know, we have enough.